Just in case anything burns down.
Come on, open up. About the 20th.
Welcome, everybody, to the Newton Board of Selectmen meeting. Today's date is February 20th, 2024. And we will start this meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this seems not working.
We're looking for citizens input. Anybody that has a comment about anything that's on the agenda today? That would like to speak to the board? Anybody in TV land? There being none? Administration. Here we go. We're going to go over the winter parking ban for Wilders Grove.
Alicia's here.
Hi, how are you?
Could you introduce yourself, spell your name for the record?
My name is Alicia Galen, A-L-I-C-I-A. Last name spelled G-E-I-L-E-N, as in Nancy. And I live at 78 Wilders Grove Road.
How are you doing this evening?
I'm doing good. How are you doing?
Good. Nice to have you here with us.
Thank you. So just jump in. This is my first time, like, on the agenda.
Just go for it.
I've lived in town for many, many, many years. So there has been, my husband and I bought the property in 2011, and we've had a continual problem with people parking on the causeway. I'm hoping, you saw the little picture that I put in that hopefully you're familiar with where it is, where the first house passed the causeway. And people will park on the road, well, people used to park, there's a fire stand. People would park there and block that. And then I think Mr. Pevero put up a no parking sign. People park on the other side, the police would make them move, but still allow them to park on the actual causeway itself. And it's mostly Massachusetts plates. And whenever I've talked to anybody with New Hampshire plates, they're never town residents. So it's people who are, they're trying to access the lake, mostly in winter, sometimes in summertime. And the problem is they park in the travel lane of Wilders Grove Road. And I went out and... It's, the travel lane is about 10, it's about 20 feet wide. And then from guardrail to guardrail, maybe 24. But in the wintertime, if you've got snow on the edge, you can lose more. And then people are obviously going to park a little bit away from the guardrail so they can get in another car. And so people are basically parking in the middle of the travel lane of a narrow two-lane road. So to my mind, that should not be allowed. And so originally, that was what I was just going to say. Can you please have no parking on both sides of the causeway all year round? And then I happened to see on the website that we have a winter parking ban. And it's parking restrictions, winter parking ban from November 1st to May 1st of each year. And it applies to all on-street parking and all roads in Newton. Which I thought was confusing because the last time I called the police about people parking was Massachusetts person. Parking on the causeway, they said, no, no, as long as they're more than 15 feet away from the standpipe, it's okay for them to park in the travel lane. And I can't imagine someone could park in the travel lane on any road in town, you know, block traffic. But it's even more of a problem because it is so narrow anyway. If a fire truck needed to get by, you know, depending on where somebody parks, it could really, it could slow down response time. People also leave trash there because they think it's a public access point. And they're crossing what is our private property to get, which is, I mean, I guess it's kind of minor, but I can't, we can't put up a fence or something, we can't put up no trespassing signs because that's where the fire department goes when they do their training and if they needed to access the fire hose. So people are parking in a travel lane, crossing over private property, leaving garbage to get to the lake. So what I'm requesting is that in the, at the bare minimum, please ask the police to enforce the parking ban, especially, it's always a problem with the fishing derby, which is coming up, if, well, if it can go forward, if the ice is thick enough, which it didn't happen last year.
It is canceled.
It's canceled. Oh, okay. We do get sometimes issues in the summertime. Most people are pretty nice. I just, you know, say, please don't park here. But I would really prefer to have no parking on the causeway, just for safety reasons as well. When we bought this house, if there was a public access point next to our property and people were parking off the traveled roadway and walking past my house, that would be my problem. But this is private property and it's a narrow road. So I would like to ask you to please put up parking, no parking signs.
Well, thank you. Any comments, gentlemen?
Trish has her hand up, but I think we have to hear from the chief as well.
Yep, I was going to. If we could have Trish.
I don't know if this will help. This area that Alicia was talking about is actually where Mike Pevero and I have, working on that culvert for the twin grant, the twin culverts. So these people are actually parking on the culvert that is already, we've already done some repairs on. So if Mike was here, he'd probably have a comment. I'm certainly not a road guy. But it would be an issue. It is very narrow and...
It's curved.
Right, and it blocks access, and the fire chief, both chiefs are here. The fire chief could also comment. Our dry hydrant is right there, and sometimes even I've gone down, and it is blocked, although, again, Mike Pevero did put up a sign. But it is a difficult area, and when it is snow on the ground, I'm sure our police chief can instruct, our new police chief can instruct people to maybe go down there if there's issues. But it's very difficult to park and then have, the fire truck could never make it past somebody who's parking there. So just so that you know the history of that culvert, it's pretty important. Thank you.
Thanks, Trish.
Yeah, I did take a ride down there, just so you know. Chief Kane?
Thank you, and good evening. I too took a ride down there, wasn't familiar with the area. So I went down and looked with the lieutenant. And in general, I have no problem if we post the bridge, no parking. I mean, it's too small. If someone parks there, it's definitely a problem getting folks by. So if that's the way the board wants to go, I would certainly have no objection to it. I guess my only comment on that would be, how often is it actually a problem with people parking there? Listening to Alicia, if it's just the winter or whatever, we might want to consider if we want to make it full-time, no parking. But actually, the winter parking ban is what really kind of got my attention. So I started to do some research on that. And in fact, we do have a winter parking ban. I don't know if you folks are familiar, it runs from November 1st to May 1st. And all it really says is that you cannot park anytime between November 1st and May 1st, anytime of the day or night on a public street in Newton. That would, that would mean that over the past couple of months, we should be writing tickets every single day to people that are parked out on the street. I gotta believe that's not what you folks really want us to do on a daily basis, is to write tickets to cars when it's 60 degrees out or whatever, and here we are writing winter parking ban tickets. So in looking at the ordinance, I think we can make some adjustments to the ordinance to give us, give everybody some leeway there. And I wrote a short memo to Jim, but I'll just tell you what I said. We could rewrite the ordinance to make it really no parking between midnight and 6:00 in the morning. That's generally what highway departments want, to go out and clean up the snow after a storm. They want to go out there at night and have a clear pathway to go ahead and clean up the storm. And if Mike was here, I assume he'd probably agree with that. So you could, you could actually change the ordinance to be no, no winter parking during those hours. We could get rid of the ordinance altogether and just write one that says, the police and the DPW together could make a decision to make a, here comes a, you know, a foot of snow coming, we're going to declare a snow emergency, and there is no parking on the streets from, from 6:00 on Monday morning till 6:00 Tuesday morning. So you have some leeway, again, to get out, get the roads cleaned up, and we have some authority to write some tickets and move people out of the way for the snow plowing equipment. We could also get rid of, not get rid of the ordinance, but add to the current ordinance that, kind of the same thing. Keep the ordinance in place, but give the DPW and the police chief the ability to declare a snow emergency and, again, say no parking on a certain, certain times. The time, November 1st to May 1st is a long time to have no parking. I think that could definitely be shortened up probably to maybe December 1st to April 1st. That cuts two months off the entire no parking ban. When, you know, you generally get through in November and you'll generally get through in April without some snow. And if it is, it's a one-time thing, it comes and goes pretty quick. So that'd be my take on it, on the bridge. Like I said, no problem, but we need some work on the winter parking ban. If, if that's what you folks agree, or if you have any questions on me saying, hey, do we want to change it time-wise or not, we can certainly look at that. But that being some of my recommendations, I did some research, too. We'd be falling into the, more so what everyone else is doing around us when it comes to the ordinance itself on time and some people getting rid of it entirely. So I can take any questions if you have them. Anybody?
Nope.
Awesome.
Thank you, Chief.
I'll be here if you have any, if anything comes up.
I just suggest that he craft a hybrid and just...
What's that?
Do a hybrid model, shorten the two months, put the winter ban in effect, but also give them the leeway to put out, like, 6:00 at night to 6:00 in the morning or however that snow emergency is, right? But put our standard from midnight to 6:00 with the ability to also call out additional hours.
Yeah, and I think, like what the chief said, though, being out there, that there definitely should not be any parking on the, on the bridge itself.
Oh, yeah, not, not that.
Period, because of even in nice weather with a vehicle being parked on there if an emergency vehicle had to get out there, because that is a dead end out there. So it's only one way in and one way out for a vehicle to get in there and not an awful lot of room. And I also noticed, which, there's a campground that's just prior to that, and they have signs up on their side of the road right before their entrance. It says, no parking this side, which is right across from the new house that is being built that's right there. So like I said, I got no, I have no problem with either the bridge that's right there. And then there's another section where those two white rails are before, prior to that, that there shouldn't be any parking in that, on that stretch right there, too. You know what I'm talking about, Chief?
Is it on the way out?
Yeah.
I think on the right-hand side is actually resident parking only there.
Yeah.
That's for the boat launch.
For the boat launch.
Yeah, exactly.
I could truly go out and look at, again, what you're talking about.
Because there, there's also a cistern at that. There's two white rails and there's a cistern in place there, too. So that there shouldn't be any parking there because, God forbid, if there was an emergency and the fire truck had to stop there in order to access that cistern, if there were vehicles parked there, that would make things complicated. Especially them being tankers that would have to go out there to put out any fires. There could be more than one truck needing to access that. So if there were cars parked there, it would not enable multiple tank trucks to be able to access that cistern, which would hamper the safety equipment. So I don't have a problem with that.
I'm not sure if I'm going to, are they talking about the road, this is Jack Hozek, the road that goes down to the town beach?
No.
Wilders Grove, no, on the other side of Country Pond after you go by Osios.
Oh, okay, okay.
On there.
I know what you mean, okay.
Yep.
Well, it was the road that goes down to the town beach, I was going to say. The fishing game has a fish, you know, ice fishing derby every year. And I think they all park down there. I wasn't sure if that's what we were talking about.
No, we're talking the other side, yep.
I don't think that counts.
Good evening.
Hi, Diane.
Hi. I just wanted to let you guys know that you can't implement an ordinance or change it without the legislative body. So this is something that I think needs to be done in '25.
Oh, yeah, we would have to...
You could have a special.
Yeah. But we could put up the no parking on, on the roadway.
Right.
That's correct.
Yes.
And actually, Diane will probably remember oftentimes what happens during a snow emergency. The road agent used to have us post it on the website, that would have been Diane or Robin, and have me also do an alert about parking, that there's a parking, emergency parking, no parking on the road in place because of the storm. And then I would work with the police department when he called in numbers to see if we can get them moved, if there were cars on the road. So it would be something, we do emergency stuff, which we can get around, you know, until next year, like Diane said. But the way the chief put it, that gives the road agent and the chief a little clout and go back to doing what we should be doing because we haven't been doing anything for years.
Yep.
You know, I would, I would just add, if, if it doesn't make sense to wait until next March, you could actually do it with a special, you know, you'd have to go look at the RSA.
It's RSA, so you could do it.
You could have it in this room.
Right.
And whoever shows up would represent the legislative...
Yep, body, correct.
But you're posting it so everybody knows within the legislative time, so they, they show up. You might want to do that because to wait until March of 2025...
You're past another snow season.
You missed another one.
Yeah. The spot that you're talking about, the causeway, is that the actual bridge with the guardrails on each side?
Yes.
And people are just parking there?
Yeah, in the travel lane all year round because it's mostly the winter.
We need to post that.
I agree.
The travel lane, which is one lane.
So do we make a motion to instruct the highway department to post that?
Post no parking on the bridge. Didn't think I was going to have to say that a second.
I would ask that we do it on both sections, where both... What do you call it?
Correction.
Cisterns are...
Oh, cistern.
I was trying to come up with the word cistern. Where both cisterns are, there should be no parking on both sides. There's the section that's prior to where you just were, that there's another section.
Here?
Yep, see, yep, right there, and then up further.
Yeah, this is the other spot.
Exactly.
You're talking here.
Yep, so I would suggest that we, we make the motion so that it encompasses both areas. That's the one, yep. And then there's one further down.
All right, yeah, that's fine. Oh, Mikey wants to see it.
Yeah, that's the one I was thinking.
Yeah, there's that one, and then there's one further up.
Yeah.
Which is by her house, 78, further down the road.
Oh, I don't go that far. Okay, I haven't gone, okay.
This is where they're parking now.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Let's post.
Yeah, let's just post it, be done. All right.
So you fine with that amendment?
Yes.
Joe made the motion, Dan seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
So done.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That was very comfortable. I was like all nervous.
Oh, don't be nervous.
I haven't heard that in this room in 20 years.
Yet another satisfied customer, right?
Have a good night.
Bye.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to approvals. Fire Department, requisition 1078.
I move to approve requisition 1078. Fire Department, the amount of $3,315 to Fire Matic Supply Company to replace a non-working cutoff soblet, sob, yeah, soblet, excuse me, per state bid funds to come from Fire Department, 202 full budget line, item number 4220303.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
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 That's unanimous. Firefighter certificate rate increase.
I move to increase Lieutenant Robert Watson rate of pay from $23.87 to $20.24.75 effective next pay period. This change is the result of the recent completion of requirements from New Hampshire Fire Standards and Training Commission, Fire Officer 2, NFPA 10212020.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
I move to increase Lieutenant Justin Kane's rate of pay from $24.95 an hour to $25.80 an hour effective next pay period. This change is the result of the recent completion of the requirements for New Hampshire Fire Standards and Training Commission, Fire Officer 2, NFPA 10212020.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
I move to increase Lieutenant Sean Kane's rate of pay from $24.95 an hour to $25.80 an hour effective next pay period. This change is the result of the recent completion of requirements for New Hampshire Fire Standards and Training Commission, Fire Officer 2, NFPA 10202020.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
I move to increase Lieutenant Peter Generalis's rate of pay from $24.95 an hour to $25.80 an hour effective next pay period. This change is the result of the recent completion of requirements from New Hampshire Fire Standards and Training Commission, Fire Officer 2, NFPA 10202020.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
That would be unanimous. Next, Mr. Nolan Ash, could you please come up and introduce yourself?
Good evening, everyone.
Your name and why here?
Nolan Ash. Sorry. And I'm here to get approved for probationary firefighter.
Thank you. The town respects your line of work and what you've doing, and we've been told that you've been, have been very dedicated in your lessons and everything that you've been undertaking to become a firefighter. And we appreciate that, that you've been stepping up for the town of Newton. With that being said, Joe?
I move to hire Nolan Ash as a probationary firefighter and increase his rate of pay from $11.70 an hour to $13.57 an hour upon completion, the requirements of a physical.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Welcome. Congratulations. Welcome.
Congrats. Good luck.
Nice to have you, boy.
Thanks, all. You know, it's the real, huh? Good deal. Thank you.
They got the jagged now that says "Probie" on the banner.
Probie.
All right, mattress pricing and transfer station, Jack?
Jack Hozek, I'm the assistant manager of the transfer station. Pete, unfortunately, couldn't be here, so that's what I'm doing. We've got a better price on mattresses right now at $45 each. That's down from 75. And the two changes that we decided to make, the town will go from 80 to 60, and out-of-towners will go from 100 to 80. And the reason that we have, we fail, Pete and I do, to keep, keep a little bit of money for ourselves, oftentimes people come in with mattresses, and if you're knowing about mattresses, sometimes they stink like hell. They're heavy, and they, they come down by themselves, they can't even stack them. So two or three of us go over and stack, especially the king size and so forth. But some of the mattresses you see down there, you wouldn't want to touch. So that's what our plan is. I hope the board will go along with it.
Any comments from anybody?
So, so just so everybody's understanding in the town, what's our actual cost?
45.
It was 45.
45.
45, that's what the new company's charging us, yes.
And you're asking for...
60 for town residents and 80 for non-residents.
So essentially what you're saying is you want to charge the town a $15 administrative fee for every...
That is correct, yes.
How did you arrive at that?
Pete and I sat down and said, this is, how do we have to handle these? You know, sometimes we're really short of people, and we've got to put those things under, camp any water on them or anything, so we've got to stack them, and we have to give up what else we're doing to get rid of them.
So I guess here's my thing. Why are they touching them at all?
Why are we touching them at all?
Yeah.
Well, because people come down with one person, and one lady is with two mattresses in the back of her truck, and she says, gee, can you give us some help?
I get that. I'm just, I'm not in favor of charging the town some more money for what we pay for it. They already pay enough in taxes. If it's $45, that's what I want to charge.
Well, we were charging them 80, and they were 75.
That's why I want it here. I want to charge the town people 45 because that's what it costs us.
Yeah, so basically what we're getting at is, we, we're a nonprofit. So anything we charge above what it costs us, there needs to be a reasoning behind.
Well, I could tell you, most of the stuff that we charge, it's, we don't know what they're charging us to the day. Getting rid of a sulfur is $20, it might be 15 when they pick them up, we have no idea. There's got to be something for the, these monies go in for the transfer station for updates and so forth, and that kitty that we have.
Right, so, so in other words, like I said, so you're saying $15, it, it costs you guys $15 in administrative work to handle one mattress?
That is correct. Well, you know, I'm talking about, there could be 10 mattresses, 15 mattresses.
Right, but then you get 15 for every mattress, so that's a hundred and...
One woman come in the other day with six mattresses.
Right, but, but you're not charging an administrative fee for six mattresses, you're charging it for every single mattress.
That's correct, yep.
So that, that's, that's the issue.
I'm not going to tell you what the issue's going to be, then. Then somebody else is going to have to come down and stack those things. If you smell some of the mattresses, we have to pick up. They're brutal. You tell us how you want to handle that. Tell the people to go home and get somebody else to come back with them to pack it. They have to be stacked properly in the new system that we have. That's why it closed up, to keep the weather out and so forth. That's our issue.
I, I think where I'm at is, if you guys could define how you arrived at $15 based on how long it takes your hourly wage, because, because...
See, man, you know, you're talking about something that we can't do. We run over there to help out and so forth. I'm not sure what, what I'm going to grab at, you know? This is not scientific, it's pretty straightforward.
How'd you get a $15?
We thought it was, we thought it was comfortable, what we have to do. Yeah, yeah.
So I guess...
You know, remember now, guys, that money goes into our fund to do maintenance on the transfer station.
Right.
Right, you know?
But people, people pay taxes to do maintenance on the transfer station. So you're charging additional...
That money comes out of our funds, any major transfer station maintenance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know. I've, so Dan's, Dan's saying zero. I'm saying something, but...
Yeah, sure.
Needs to be defined, so. Joe?
Joe?
I'm saying maybe $50.
So, so $5 more.
Right.
Mike?
At 45. But we, we pay, no, we, the town people pay taxes. That tax dollar goes to these costs. Yes, you have to pay for your mattress disposal, which is extra, and nobody has to pay, burn that cost, but I, I... Unless, Jack, you can come up with it, how you come up with that administrative fee?
We just arbitrarily did. Pete and I sat down and said, what do you want to do? We know what we do down here when it happens, that, you know, we just, that we felt comfortable with it. We felt that that money that we're going to be getting, the extra money, goes into our fund for maintenance, you know?
So I would suggest we keep it at 45, and then if they come back and have more definitive, we can take a discussion at that point.
Trish, you want to say something?
I don't know if this is going to be worse. So I understand...
So, I understand, (laugh) I understand what Jack is saying, that, yeah, think, think about mattresses, and very few of us can handle a mattress by themselves, so it's taking two people is what he's saying. The average person down there, because, you know, they're there because they make a million, make about 13 bucks an hour. So if we say it took 15 minutes for two people to go get something out of a car, go stack it where they're supposed to, that's $6.80. So if you went a little over that 45, like somebody said, somebody said a little over, that could justify the labor that it takes, because the average person can't do it, and they can't do it alone. Um, so just a thought, if we broke it down by the actual money that they make, just a thought.
Exactly. And that's, that's exactly what we need to do. We, we can't be arbitrary. We have to, we have to use the, the numbers we have and figure it out. I would be comfortable with that, you know? You're saying it's $6.86 an hour, we want to call it seven, or just call it 50.
That's two people. So it's 13 bucks, it's two people to handle the mattress, minimum.
Yeah, so, but that's not every time somebody comes down, so you've got to, if you had 100 mattresses and you had to help 50 of them, then that's half of, half of the mattresses, right?
Yep.
So if I took, did the math that Trish came up with, and you're at $6.17 for a mattress, and I break that back down to 50 percentile, then I'm now talking about three extra dollars. And I'm, I'm okay, you know, I'm not, I'm not here to argue that, but at 60, I'm, I can't justify that.
I'll make a motion to set it at 50 for in-town and 80 for out-of-town.
I'll second that.
I'll third that.
Second, Dan made the motion, Joe seconded, and just for discussion, you know, I, I've been watching what takes place down there, and the amount of mattresses that seem to go through that transfer station for a small town.
Sure does.
And one of my, one of my key points is, is I'm wondering when, you know, these mattresses that are coming in from out-of-town, I think that's, I want to stress, that's why we're keeping it at where it's at, at that $80, because of the huge influx, where people can't get rid of them. It's nice that they're being, um, taken care of properly, but because of that, and, um, we need to keep that price at the 80. Um, I can see doing the 50, only for one other point that I'm going to make, and that is that you gentlemen should be buying latex gloves to be able to wear when you're handling those.
I think we'd add hazmat suits on some of those mattresses.
Well, I'm just saying that you should at least have, for handling them, you should have latex gloves.
I always wear gloves, yeah, yeah.
All right.
That doesn't, that doesn't...
No, I don't mean regular work gloves that you're going to put back on. I mean latex gloves you use, you take, and you throw out.
Yep.
Yep. So, okay, so we have the motion, seconded by Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
And that would be unanimous.
Fifty and eighty.
So 50 and 80.
Is there anything else that I'm supposed to talk about tonight?
Yes, yes.
Who do you want to say?
Oh, yes, the...
The next item is the voucher program.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Jack, could you just describe the process you put in place for the board? Describe the process you've put in place.
Okay, um, I, I talked to Jim today and brought up the paperwork and so forth. This is what we've been telling people, and so far it's worked out fantastic. I tell them they're not going to get a hard voucher next year. That'll save, I think, $500 to produce those. We have an alphabetical list, and this is what I tell people, and I've been telling them, I, I talk to everybody, so I'm telling, and nobody has complained at all. The day you want to get rid of your stuff, you load up your truck, your pickup truck or whatever, you come down, you stop at the front gate, say, I'd like to use my voucher. Whoever's at the front gate goes in, checks your name off, crosses it out on our list, and you go get rid of your stuff. Pretty simple. In fact, Jim and I talked about, what if you're a, a newy to the town? You know, they may come down to us and say, look, I understand it's a voucher system, we just moved in four months ago, we didn't get one. What we will do, we'll send it to the town hall, and I think Robin is going to write up one, give it to them, and they'll come down and use it. Simple as that.
Well, they would all, you could also ask them for their car registration, because their registration had proof of address.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, we get, it's, it's always usually on their license anyway. If we have a question, we go further, yeah.
Yep.
And so far, we've got, I don't know, the people that have come in, at least 20 to 30, and we've had no issues.
The only problem I see is if the town hall is closed, how do you take care of them that day?
That would only be for, um, new people.
No, I know, but how would you take care of them?
They'll have to wait till Monday.
But if I've just filled up my truck and I'm down there?
They wouldn't come down. These are people that, I just moved into town three months ago. I run up to the window and I said, look, my neighbor tells me there's a voucher system in town. How do I get one? And whoever's at the front gates is, you go to the town hall, I'm not sure if it's going to be Robin, whoever, but you go and see somebody at the town hall, they'll look it up, verify it, fill it out with your name and address, give it to you, and you use it when you need to.
So I'm new in town, I just, I hear that you go to the transfer station and do it, I show up with a truck full of stuff, what do you do?
They wouldn't, well, they shouldn't be coming down with a full loaded truck if they don't have a voucher.
But you know people are going to do that.
Yeah, well, yeah, well...
The only problem I have with that though, Matt, is that warrant that was put out stipulates that they will be mailed out.
Yeah.
That is what the legislative body put out there.
I think that Jim agreed with me today, and the rewording on the website, I think you come up with something very good.
Well, actually, the, the wording is issue.
Yeah.
It doesn't tell you the method of the issue.
Yeah. I, I would just say, this, this all sounds good, like anything in life, it's got to be seen as an experiment, because we're doing something different, but you have to figure out a way, because I, you heard it here first, just as Mike described, you will have that person, and the worst...
That's okay. We, we deal, we deal with a lot worse things than that down the dock.
I'm sure, but let me, let me finish, because the worst thing in Newton is loading up your truck and coming to the transfer station and being turned away for whatever it is, weather, or you're one minute late, or whatever. So you just want to have something in place, you know, so that you can, you can provide customer service to those people.
You know, if I was new in town, maybe they don't even qualify for one. They would come down and discuss about it. That's the hope for this.
You would hope, you would hope, but...
You would hope, you know?
You're going to have at least one person.
But if we have those exceptions, Matt, we'll deal with them, you know?
But we have to figure out how we're going to deal with them. You can't just say, oh, we'll deal with it.
Yeah, it's going to be a process, and it's going to treat everybody the same way.
A process to verify, because two of your busiest days...
Saturday and Sunday.
Nobody, nobody's here, right? So...
Trish, you're jumping. I can see it. Go.
I have another suggestion, but this is only because, with my Realtor hat on, when I sell houses in town, I give them, and maybe I should give you guys a copy of it, I give a checklist, and one of the things is about registering your car. If you can't get to register it, and usually we close on a Friday, so now they're doing what you say, loading up their trucks, um, I tell them they have to bring a purchase and sale, a signed purchase and sale, to the transfer station, or town hall, if town hall is open, to justify that they live in town. But that's just a thought, it's not...
And that would, we, we take care of it at the transfer station?
Trisha's coming with the ideas, she's like, she's like batting a thousand.
Right, yeah. That's a very good solution, so if somebody comes down with a truckload and they're new, and they show all those documents, we let them get rid of it.
Exactly.
I'd like to say that we...
They write their name and address down, I'm sorry, what, Joe?
I would like to say that we revisit this next October, and if there's any issues and whatnot, and then we, you know, we'll be in time for, if we have to rewrite a warrant article or something like that, we can always revisit it.
Diane?
Just real quick, they would need to also have a, um, they'll have a residential sticker, correct? If they're new residents, if they've registered their cars, so that's another way they could verify that they are residents.
That's a good point. Thanks, Diane.
Yeah, there's a lot of people that move into town that don't register a car for several months.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
Yeah, but...
Yes, but then they can't go to the transfer station unless they have a temporary or a registration, uh, resident sticker, so...
Wouldn't even come to the transfer station.
Yep.
But like, like, like Joe said, like I was saying earlier, this is an experiment, you've got to see how it works.
We'll revisit it in October.
And then revisit it as a board, and then maybe you do change the ordinance.
And I think Jim come up with something to put on the website, which I think was right to the point, how, how it's going to work and so forth.
And you can also send out an email blast, right? We, we can do that from our website?
It's already done.
You're good. You're good.
I saw it today, right? It came out today, so.
All right, so we're going to put this down to revisit it in October, as Joe suggested.
Yep, just writing in right now.
And we'll see how it...
Well, you're down there enough, if we have any issues, or just to throw them at you, you know? I don't anticipate any, like I said, I bet I...
We're just giving them our address, yeah.
You're right around the corner, they can just go to your house.
Bring some rubber gloves down, so if we have a lot of mattresses, you're a big guy, you could probably pick up one of those king-size mattresses by yourself.
Jim just gave you a hint.
Get the feel of what it is, you know?
Mrs. Jim, uh, two things, one on topic and then one off topic. Jack showed me the sheet today of all the addresses and the names. He's on the far right-hand side, he's putting down the cash value of what we're not getting because we're giving vouchers out.
Right.
It's just interesting to know, at the end of the day, how much the program actually costs the town in lost revenue.
It's a good idea.
It's a good idea.
And my second observation is Chief Kane has offered to write up a proposed, um, ordinance for next year.
For next year.
All right, great.
Get them all here. Get them all here.
All right, we're all set?
Off to October. Thank you.
And just to finish this topic, on behalf of the transfer station and the Board of Selectmen, I would like to apologize to all the town residents for the miscommunication and any trouble or aggravation that all of this has caused all of you. So we apologize, and we will get this taken care of.
It was an experiment to begin with, with nobody's name on them, so, you know, and Pete said, I think the cost of those cars are like $500 a year. Not a savings, yeah.
All right, thank you, Jack.
You're welcome. Thanks.
All right, let's see here.
Look at this.
Manifest, Joe?
I move to approve a withdrawal in the amount of $71,740.45 from the police special detail account with the pay date of February 14, 2024, to pay an invoice to West Bank for fuel purchases in the amount of $1,417.2, an invoice, an invoice MHQ Incorporated in the amount of $78,323.23.
Seconded by Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
I move to approve a withdrawal in the amount of $2,350 from the ambulance revolving account to pay an invoice to Mountain Tree Medical with the pay date of February 14, 24.
Seconded by Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
I move to approve payroll manifest in the amount of $64,388.63 for pay period January 28 through February 10, 2024, with the pay date of February 15, 2024.
Seconded by Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
I move to approve a withdrawal in the amount of $6,402 from the cable revolving fund to pay an invoice to Hewlett Packard Financial Services in the amount of $240.2, and an invoice to Ramon Networks in the amount of $5,764, with the pay date of February 14, 2024.
Seconded by Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
I move to approve end of a manifest in the amount of $57,447.68 with the pay date of February 14, 2024. Payback includes $26,000, $26,000... Okay, is it, uh...
Why?
No zero.
No zero, okay.
$26,469.6 to Gmail disposal, and $8,149.77 to Municipal Resources Incorporated.
Seconded by Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
That would be unanimous. We will now move on to action items, new and old business, and I believe Trisha has something to address the board about.
Yes, thank you. Okay, um, the EOC update, I've got a couple of things here. I mainly wanted you to know, um, Governor Sununu has requested that President Biden issue a major declaration disaster for the December storm that we have. So just so you understand, Mike and I are already working with the FEMA team. We were approved for a disaster last July, that rain event, and then last week they called me and said, oh, now we have a January event that has been approved as a disaster, which means anything we spend, any of our money, we will get reimbursed. Hopefully, we'll get it this year, otherwise, that's what happens, Mike ends up not being able to put it back in the right account. Um, so now we're meeting tomorrow with the people for January. Next Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, we're meeting to show them 20 more roads, or culverts, or swales, or twin culverts, um, where we've got damaged. And now, this was issued to us last Thursday, another storm event that we may get money for, and this one was December 17th to the 21st. So we have last July, the 9th to the 14th, we've got December, and now we've got January. So we're working on a lot of reimbursements. I'm reminding them, we're an on-call department, we have a road agent that, you know, really works somewhere else where he makes money, so it's hard to have him take a whole bunch of days out of the week, but I just wanted to give you that update. So we've got three things we're working on that could bring money to the town to reimburse his expenses, which is really good. Um, and it's interesting, this December event that they just approved, um, was worse than our July event, and that Biden approved it as a disaster, so we're hoping for the same reimbursement. So that will help. Um, also with the EOC, and after this, can I just, one quick thing about conservation?
No.
Okay. All right, well, then back to the EOC, the hell with you. Um, so you have been wonderful to give me this car that is really good. I almost have to push it with my feet, no, really kidding.
Red Flintstone.
I, unfortunately, I've spoken to three garages, the most recent one today, um, that I trust very much, and basically, I can only drive this car till, till March 31st. I have a 60-day inspection sticker on it. There's multiple issues. The biggest ones, I would say, are safety, um, there's a lot of rot. Some garages were afraid to put it on the, the lift because they thought it was going to drive up through the rear end. Um, so I'm letting you know, because I'm not going to put any more money into this car, um, other than I've got an appointment to go up to Atkinson to a gentleman who specializes in taking care of the lights, um, the radar, although I am certified to run radar in Massachusetts. I told the chief, (laugh) but we're going to take that out, and, um, the police radio is already out. I haven't put my fire radio in because of this. Um, so I'm working on kind of stripping down the car till I can't drive it anymore. Unfortunately, I have two new tires that have about 10 miles on them, but I just spoke to the police chief, and he has a car that they might fit, and he actually said he might have a car that's newer than what I have, uh, the same type of car, so maybe we could transfer the equipment to it. But that's going to be for you guys to decide later on. I just mainly wanted to give you an update on the car. So I'm using it, I'm only staying in town, out of town for meetings, I'm using my car, and, um, I'll keep you posted. Okay? And lastly, about, um, conservation, if I, I just want to let you know, because it's already the end of February, um, Earth Day is April 22nd, so I've only got the March meetings to talk to you about it and tell our TV land about it. Um, we're going to do a community garden at the entrance to the bush farm. Anyone that wants to help us, um, we're looking for containers, we're going to be planting, um, wildflower seed packets, milkweed, uh, Joe pie weed, goldenrod New England asters, we're going to get some baby plants. Alicia, who's an environmentalist that you just heard, was on conservation, as you remember, for many years, she's going to help us. Um, so it is something we're going to push, we're going to put something on the website, and I'm going to probably mention it every one of your meetings, so if people want to pitch in and they want to come, it would be a great activity to get the kids involved. We're even going to get the scouts involved. So that's my report.
Don't go nowhere.
Okay.
If you're doing for the scouts, remember Girl Scouts.
Yes, oh, yes. I was one. I remember.
108, just after you go by Gould Road there?
Mm-hmm.
That house that sits on the corner with the white fence that always gets broken?
Yes.
Just after that white fence, there's a huge tree that was broken, I don't know if it snapped because of the wind, it got hit by lightning or whatever.
Yep.
It is tall enough to where it is leaning on a couple of other trees, that if it falls, it's going to come down. it's going to come down across one oh eight, and somebody could get killed.
I'll call the, the unital guy we deal with, because he'll want to have that cut down.
So, yeah, well, it, like I said, it's already broken about three feet up.
I know what you, you mean, yeah. I think it took down part of the fence, too, didn't it?
No, this one had not even near the fence.
Oh, really?
I'm talking, this one's a few feet away from it.
Oh, okay.
But it's leaning straight, like it's going to come down across this road.
Okay.
If it snaps through the branches that are holding up the tree. It's about a forty footer.
Wow.
Yeah.
Is it in the right of way?
Huh?
Is it in the right of way?
It's on private property, but it snapped, and like I said, it's...
It's hanging over the right of way.
It's leaning at a forty-five, and it's hung up only by a couple of trees...
Okay.
...in its way.
I'll get on it. One last thing, sorry. Um, and you know, you've heard me say this before, the feds say COVID is over. You know it's not over. Um, we've got a huge amount of people that are calling me regularly, because they need test kits. I called today multiple times Homeland Security and spoke to my liaison to try to get some. Please remember, if you're sick, stay home. We don't want you here. Residents, you can do stuff online. Mary Jo wants me to remind you. And just know, if you have symptoms, you are contagious seventy-two hours before the symptoms started, and after your symptoms are gone, you have to have seventy-two hours with a no fever-reducing medicine before you can be with people. So please remember that. I can't tell you how many people in town, because that violates privacy. How many people have COVID? We've got to be careful. Thanks.
Thank you, Trish. All right, and then, old and new business. We haven't had any updates for a while about what's been taking place, um, with some vacancies that we've had in town. So the town administrator's been nice enough to write this up, so that I can put it out there to inform the public about what's been going on. Uh, we've been recruiting for the vacancy in finance since December of two thousand, twenty-two. There have been no candidates with municipal experience, but strengths in finance. During this time, we offered the position to a candidate with a school bookkeeping background, and she resigned after two months, citing the workload was too great, and an additional part-time employee was needed. Recently, we offered the position to a candidate with a strong private sector finance background, and she left after three weeks for similar reasons, with a need to work from home also. There has been a consultant in the position, ensuring our employees and vendors are getting paid, um, for right now. So we're keeping the lights on as best we can in that position. MRI has reposted the position as an accept, and is accepting resumes. MRI conducted the recruitment of our next police chief, which resulted in, uh, and the results was for four candidates being interviewed by the board and MRI senior consultants via Zoom, because they were all out of state. We invited two candidates to interview in person and offered the position to the top choice. However, he accepted a civilian position in the state that he lives in. The second candidate withdrew from the process. We then interviewed the number three candidate in person. We offered him the position. During the background check, he declined to continue the process. There has been a consultant in the position since the end of two thousand, twenty-three, and the department has been exhibiting professional growth since his arrival, and that would be Chief Kane, who was here earlier at the meeting, and we thank him for all the work that he's been doing in keeping our police force intact and operating. The MRI has reposted the position as an accepting, is accepting resumes. This board has spent countless hours reviewing resumes and conducting interviews to get Newton the best possible people in the two-mission critical position. We will continue this work until we have the best possible professionals for our town. We thank you for your patience as we work through these processes. And I would just like to, um, again, reiterate, um, we wouldn't be where we are if, if it wasn't for the board working together the way that it has, in order to, to keep the town afloat the way we have.
You know, I'd also like to add, you know, and, and thank you, Jim, for that summary. It's tough out there. If you didn't get that impression from what we just read, it is tough out there. We're not the only town looking for people. If you want to go on the MRI website, where's where most people post these things, there's countless towns in New Hampshire, and our competition is also Northern Massachusetts. It's tough out there. Um, I think the town's doing a pretty good job considering, so...
Yeah.
Uh, make sure you support these efforts by voting on, on March twelfth, right?
Yeah.
How quickly I forget. March twelfth, and voting for our proposed budget, quite frankly, so.
I would also add, if there's anybody in town that has a skill set, and they're looking for something close, go to that MRI website, or come to our town website, and look at what we're posting, because if you're in town, we'd like to hire you and keep you in town, if you have the right skill set.
And you just bold underlined the right skill set, because as, as Bob mentioned, we're not looking for the wrong people to put in the position. We're looking for people with the skills, so that we get somebody who can do the job and do it for a long time.
That's it.
Yep.
That qualified. Anything else? We good?
We're good. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn, seconded by Joe.